Here we go. So, good evening. This February 23rd, 2021, open meeting of the Conservation Commission is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you can find posted with agenda materials for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For this meeting, the Conservation Commission is convening by Zoom as posted on the agenda. You may join us by going to the website and getting all of the relevant information off of the agenda. All right. Before we turn to the first item on the agenda, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. For any discussion items, I, the chair, will go down the line of members, inviting each by name to provide any common question or motion. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. Take care not to share your screen and try to mute yourself when you can. For any response, please wait until the chair yields support to you and state your name before speaking. Board numbers will be called upon first name alphabetical order. Telephone participants, no, here we go. On the bottom of the participant area, you will see the list of phone and video participants. And on the bottom, you will see the ability to click on a button to raise your hand. Please ensure your name is displayed, list your name, address, and then your question. Should you have any questions, telephone participants can use their phones keypad on a Zoom meeting to raise their hand by hitting star nine. Assuming this is any public participation that's relevant for them. The chair will seek questions from the public that have hit the raise hand button in the order which are listed. The participant will be called on to identify their name and address and their question. The chair will afford the applicant or the representative the opportunity to reply. Your hand will be lowered when you have been given the floor for your question. The board will continue down the list of those in the raise hand column and again, afford the applicant or rep an opportunity to speak. Should there be a physical electronics submitted questions or concerns, it will be read for the record. And again, the applicant or rep will be afforded the opportunity to speak. Finally, each vote taken will be conducted by roll call vote. And yes, we can open our meeting now that you've all heard that.
Mr. Chairman, can we amend the agenda? Include a discussion of the Mary's revisions to the AC/EC policy?
I thought that was on the agenda.
I don't see it here, I don't think.
Obviously, I mean, I didn't look past the Zoom link. All right, yeah, let's amend it, let's get this settled.
I do have it, so I can show it if you like.
And it got emailed to everybody?
It did, believe everybody got it, should have.
Yeah, yeah, that went out. All right, so we're amending the agenda. Is this just like a pen and paper scratch off and we just added it? Or do we need to motion to add this on? I mean, no harm done to like do it by motion, right?
I moved, we added to the agenda.
Great, roll call, Benjamin.
Yep.
Bill.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, you come through great, man. Daniel.
Yep.
Kevin, Mary.
Yes.
No Peter. All right, great. Also, in the affirmative for me, great. So, we have a new item on the agenda. It's first on our to-do list. And so with that being said, let's turn to Ben. Ben, did Mary do an amazing job with your piece? And it's far better than it was when just, you know, you were involved?
I think so. I also want to take a moment to recognize that we're all wearing glasses, which is amazing. Mary, do you want to say anything about what you?
How am I?
All right, Kathy. Is there anything you want to say about what you did in your revisions?
I think that, I think it was important to have it be a kind of a one-pager or close to it and just be very clear about, so that, I mean, consultants could wade through the regulatory language, but it was a little hard for it to follow for anyone else that isn't quite as, you know, up to date on the regulations. So, I was trying to consolidate it and just actually to delete a lot of reference to the waterways regulations, which is not our purview, and just try to stick to why we think the docks don't meet the Wetland Protection Act performance standards or not likely to meet them. So, that's primarily, and also just correcting the references in the Wetland Protection Act to the coastal, the coastal resource sections because the bulk of the AC/EC is in coastal wetlands. And I think the docks will be all in coastal wetlands. So, that's, that's all I tried to do there. I mean, I did, it was more cutting than adding, so it was just taking out some material. I think it read fine without, without reference to the wet waterways regs.
Yeah, I didn't have any objection. I agree with, you know, the purpose of doing that. I wrote a fairly long and inclusive thing, probably in part because I was educating myself as I went. So, yeah, I think it turned out fine and.
It's, it's still a kind of an outstanding question about how these docks are permitted. And I'm running, I run into it on other sites as well. And you can't put any structure that requires a Chapter 91 license in the AC/EC until the town gets its own harbor, approved harbor management plan that addresses the construction of docks in AC/EC. And it's, that's not something that's on the forefront of the town's agenda to do, developing a harbor management plan that would address this. So, in the absence of that, there really is, you could get a dock approved under the Wetlands Protection Act, but you can't get a Chapter 91 license right now for it. So, the Chapter 91 license trigger is, is, you know, placement of a structure below the mean high water line. So, you know, the way that folks have been stepping around that issue, as you know, is just to not have any peers below mean high water and have it just be gangway and, gangway and anchor-supported floats, which can be approved by the harbor master under, as a 10A permit. It doesn't require Chapter 91 license. So, if you can configure a dock in a way that is either cantilevered or can have a gangway or something and then to a float, that's all temporary seasonal structure, then that, that has been used as a way around and providing access to the waterfront without having a permanent structure that requires Chapter 91 licensing.
Yeah, well, and then the, there's a, as it's been explained to me by the regulatory authorities involved, that that's the DEP trigger, but then the AC/EC regulations under the Waterways Act for, are overseen by CZM. So, when you don't get a Chapter 91, they never see it. And if CZM sees it, they'll say, no, it's not allowed under waterways regulations anyways. But they just never see it. So, it's an illegal structure. It's just that there's no regulatory trigger for the people who would say no to see it.
Right, and DEP has said directly to me, you know, we're not chasing down these, these structures. We're not, we're leaving it up to the towns. It's not anything that we're, you know, we're actively enforcing. So, that's why people are continuing to do it. There was at one point an amnesty period for existing structures, existing unlicensed structures to get licensed. That has long gone. And so, this is the only way people that have any waterfront, that borders an AC/EC are able to get a dock.
Unless you, your town gets them, the harbor.
Unless you do our proposal and, you know, our dock policy that says, well, you know, stop here because we're likely not going to go down that road with you.
Yeah, and I think, you know, this, the dock policy is a stopgap till we knock on wood, get a bylaw enacted and do it to regulation.
Right, it won't, it's, it's only going to be, it's only going to be supported as long as the commission members vote to support it individually, permit by permit.
So, yeah, I made a few, when you, as Bill was showing that document, when you start tearing stuff up in that revision mode, I do it all the time too. When you, when you go back to just inline, you're like, oh, that doesn't make any sense grammatically. So, I made.
All right.
Grammatical tweets.
Yeah, I didn't review it for that, but I'm sure that's, that was right.
There was one sentence where it's like, we are deleting. And so, I just made a change to that and I think that Bill resented.
Okay.
But I think you did a great job, Mary. Thank you very much for taking a critical eye to it.
Sure.
And so, I would make a motion unless other, somebody else has anything to say about it to approve the amended policy.
Going once, going twice.
I heard Dan second.
Should we have?
All right.
Sorry, Bill, what's that?
I'm sorry, should we have Lisa Mead take a look at it now, after we?
We didn't change, my feeling is that we didn't change any of the language that Lisa inserted in her revision of it. There was nothing changed there. It might be the safest possible thing to do that.
Yeah.
And so, maybe I will change my motion to, I will move that the Concom approved this version and pass it to Lisa Mead for final approval by town council prior to it becoming the new official policy. That way, we don't have to talk about it again.
Now, you, now you've got me. Now, now we're doing a roll call vote. Benjamin.
Yep.
All right, Bill.
Yes.
Daniel.
Yes.
Mary.
Yes.
And I will also do an end zone dance over this one. Great, let's send that along, get our final approval. And then, arguably, we won't have to deal with any more dock confusion in the near term. Hopefully, we'll see. Anyway, moving on to the heart of the, the issue of the, of the evening is the, what, are we even as high as half a dozen points of discussion that we have left in this bylaw that we're working through? How many, how many points do we have, Bill?
I think there's like four or five, maybe six. They're all in red, so we can go through them and tell me how you want me to edit them or add them or.
Yeah, so I think the way we should do this, let's just do open season, you know, disorderly conduct. You know, people can talk over each other and interrupt and argue. And then, at a certain point, I don't know, I'll have an egg timer go off on the side and we'll just take a vote and see what we want to do. So, yeah, let's scroll through this top to bottom bill and let's not move on.
You want me to? This is the one where, I think most of the blue items that Mary had, we had discussed last time that we'd all agreed upon. I changed to black and only added the red comments that were given to me after the fact, after the last review.
Perfect.
You want me to just go through that? I mean, like the first eight, looks like they were pretty much all agreed upon.
And that is, that, that first part is just having to do with the State Wetland Protection Act. So, all it is, is reiterating the purposes of the State Wetland Protection Act. So, and that came from the original text of the, of our bylaw that exists right now.
Right.
So, there, there's no change to that section.
So, I don't know if. Yeah, all of the things we don't need to worry about.
Right.
So, I don't know if this is in the right section or not, or just one of the special purposes.
All right, so let's look at it. Does it go past the screen? Is there more red below this, Bill? Like, do you need to change the zoom? No, okay.
It, I think that this, if it, this is a purpose that is related to the, our bylaw now. And so, it goes, it should go under the purpose section of our bylaw. So, it's not in the right place. But here's the special purposes of the bylaw under section B. So.
It should go below it?
Yeah.
Let's go down here.
And then, if you go up, before you paste it in there, you can see that there already is a purpose in there. The special purpose of the bylaw is, you know, this is what's in our regulations already now, what the special purpose of the bylaw is, you know, use the home rule authority. And then, I think that all of this was, was in the original bylaw.
All right, so Bill, drop that somewhere and let's have a look at it and see what we want to keep or discard.
So, if you want to put it along with those.
Make it number nine.
Put it out.
Yep.
Oops, I didn't see.
And I think, you know, it just is, I think it's a good point to make. I'm not sure who made it, but I think it's, it's a valuable point. But I think that it's more appropriate for the regulations than for the bylaw itself. I don't think we need to have it in the bylaw. I think that referencing the material that we would rely upon to make decisions and things like that, we don't need to put in the file. That's my opinion.
Do you think, yeah, I think that I originally, I don't know who wrote this. I don't think I did. Because I think I totally spaced on providing language. But I think I said, do we want to have a special purpose for recognizing protection of ecological function? And just keep it very simple.
So, you could, if you scroll up to, Bill, if you scroll up to the purpose main paragraph there, keep going up a little bit, right there, to where we say to provide enhanced protection to all coastal and inland, well, okay, for the following purposes. I see what you're saying, okay. So, maybe you just want to have a number nine that says, you know, something about ecological.
Yeah.
Ecological. Protection.
Function.
See, yep.
To protect the ecological function of all resource areas. Or, I mean, we, we want it for coastal and inland areas.
Yep.
So, Ben, I'm just trying to think back to that conversation that we had. And I'm recalling it more. I thought we wanted to find a way to bring, you know, science into the regulatory space and have a venue, a vehicle, a, an opening, like we wanted to bring a peer-reviewed piece of literature about the latest thing about marsh swallows, for instance, you know, into the conversation. You know, I thought that was sort of the idea of this language that Bill's putting together. Am I remembering that right?
I think that's a function of it. And I, I mean, I tend, I'm nowhere near the authority that Mary is on this, but I already agree with her that that's something we can do through regulation. And we don't need to get so specific in the purpose here. We want to keep the purpose broad and then be specific in our regulation language. I'm also, I will admit to being somewhat fearful of opening that door because then we're, I mean, I, I, you know, obviously, I know aquatic ecology and fisheries is specifically literature a lot better than some of the wetland stuff. But, I mean, you can find quite a diverse set of opinions and findings on almost any subject. And I really am fearful about the commission being thrust into a role, playing referee of what the best scientific literature is.
Yeah.
But I, it's with some trepidation, I would open that door.
That's fair. Yeah, I'm just trying to remember what we were doing with this, the goal behind it, you know, rather than the language that we're, is on the table.
My goal is to be able to talk about ecological function so that, you know, when you have a case where, you know, and some of the regs that we would like to put forward can reference our purpose of ecological function, like for buffer zones. Like, so we don't make buffer zones a protected resource, a named resource. We say, to preserve the ecological function of the resource area, which is the wetland, we recognize there's ample evidence that buffer zones have to remain functional and intact. And so, we are going to have a regulation that blah, 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 blah.
Okay.
And, Bill, can you add on that last, last sentence you just did? All inland and coastal wetland resources?
Can I just add it right here? No?
Wetland, add wetland between coastal and resources. Is that what you wanted?
Yeah.
You want to add the word wetland?
Yep, yep.
That's what you're saying.
Otherwise, yeah, that looks good to me.
Inland and coastal wetland.
Well, the, so the one thing is that right now, I think it's the way we have it. We might almost, I don't, I don't know how to do it, Mary, but because I think right now, this is number nine under coastal. And then, after number nine, it switches to inland.
No, this is just still the, oh, it doesn't.
Okay, my fault, I, I.
I think this is still just the purpose of the bylaw.
Oh, that's it, it says within coastal areas, yeah.
No, it's within coastal areas.
You're right, yes, okay, you're right. So, this is.
So, I take the inland out and leave it as?
Yeah, take all inland out, yes, you're right.
And then, we'll have the same thing under inland and those to say inland.
All right.
Yep.
So, am I taking the red?
Take that out, yeah, that big.
Take the red portion out for now? Oh, yes. Delete it or no?
Yeah.
Just, okay, I make sure. I can add it back in.
Yeah, and Dan and Bill, if you guys aren't chiming in against anything, I'm going to presume that you guys are in agreement with whatever else is going on. So.
So, I think, I don't know if I add this in the right spot or if it should be somewhere else, but I'll leave it there and someone can read it.
Okay, let's go, let's deal with it now. Or actually, no, before we do that, take your number nine, copy, paste that, put it in the inland areas and we'll come back to this next red one.
So, I'll put it.
Yeah, where? Who knows if any of us gets to around?
Oops.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll fix it, there we go.
Yep.
All right.
All right, so we have two 10s, I'll have to fix that.
Yeah.
Yeah, whatever, don't worry about that stuff, cool.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's for later. Let's get rid, let's kill the red, let's kill the red writing.
Yes, don't let it say 10, we'll fix it later.
Yeah.
All right, so we got, that's, next red writing is right here. So, I don't know if it's going to have you.
Yeah. Yeah, and this, Mary, I think this is the same point you were just talking about. You know, the idea of resiliency to climate change and how do you integrate that into this kind of thing? Is it a high-purpose call-out or is it just something you build into the regs?
You, you, I think we definitely want to just build it into the regs at this point. And, but I think we should save some of these comments so that we have them when we get to the regs section. And, you know, we have, we have some, you know, record of some of these, because it's, it's a decent comment, so it's.
Yeah, I have, I have to save somewhere else so I can bring them back in.
Okay, yep.
I'm saving working drafts of everything too.
Okay.
So, should I remove this?
If we don't need this at this high level and it's just going to cause a fuss, you know, like, you know, it's one more thing to explain, one more detail to deal with. And we can, and if it fits in with everything else, then let's kill it, it's fine. The, the only thing that, you know, and, and Mary, this gets, again, the, the purpose section. You know, if we put it in in the purposes, does it make it easier to bring it in downstream? You know, if we don't have it in here and we try to bring it in later, does it, is it like, you know, fitting the wrong foot into a small shoe kind of thing? Or does it, you know, it's okay because resiliency is protecting aquaculture and rare species and blah, 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 all the other things?
No, no, you have to be explicit. And if you're going to try to claim that, you know, downstream for a permit that you're, you know, you want to protect it for a purpose that's not specified here, then we don't have jurisdiction to do that technically. So, yeah, you want to, you want to put all the purposes out there. You just don't have to be detailed about what you mean by them. You can write regulations to fill in the blanks.
So, if we just write something like to encourage resilience in the face of climate change or something, you know, vague and short like that?
Just like we did in the coastal section. And you can apply the same language in the inland section. And I think there was something in the inland section on carbon sequestration and that would equally go under both, I think. And maybe we combine the two.
Yeah, they, I mean, they would go together nicely.
Yep.
So, what do you want, you want me to write another inland purpose?
Yeah, Bill, why don't you start a new number and we'll call it, yeah, to, no, so, let's see, to protect, to.
To provide.
To. Well, to promote, encourage provision, what's the word we want to use here?
Well, you've already used it once. To protect coastal resiliency from sea level rise, we said, in number eight of.
Right.
Do I, are we going to say to protect inland wetland areas from climate change impacts?
Yes.
Impacts of climate change?
Yep.
Yeah.
Keep it that simple?
No, that, that's, that it nicely.
Okay.
On the effects of climate change?
Do we want to be forward? My only additional comment is, do we want to be more forward-looking and bake in some ability for projected climate change? To say like, to provide, to protect inland and provide response? I'm trying to think about the actual words, but like, to protect inland wetland areas from current and future climate change? Like, do we want to be able to?
From the impact of a changing climate? So, we say a change in climate, right? So, that's current, past, present, and future.
I'm okay with that. Because, I mean, I think we're getting better and better ideas of what's going to happen in most of the models that have previously existed and been conservatively, wrong in the conservative.
You know, I, you can say, if you wanted, you know, be any more detailed, we could add, you know, to protect inland wetlands from the impact of a changing climate with particular attention to, you know, carbon sequestration and flood control or whatever, you know, we could add to that if you wanted to. I mean, it is, that's a really broad statement and is, can be interpreted a lot of different ways and might make people a little bit nervous that you're kind of giving the commission carte blanche just to just.
Yeah, and, and in respects to carbon sequestration, changes in annual precipitation patterns and changes in seasonal temperatures, or seasonal temperatures and precipitation patterns. I think that's largely what we're going to be interested in.
Right, and that takes it out of the realm of like a backyard deck rebuild. And we're talking about, you know, broader inputs rather than these little, these little sort of tiny touches.
So, are we looking at this in a cumulative sense? So, are we looking at cumulative impacts of changing climate? Here, are we looking at this site by site? It's just really hard to apply it to a single project. And, you know, making individual homeowner, you know, take responsibility for climate change is, is, you know.
I, I'm more interested in like trying to prevent decisions that look marginally okay right now, but could look like with all available information, look terrible in 10 years. You know what I mean? So, it is a site by site thing for me, but it's like, it's like people who might be want to build, if we have information that our precipitation pattern, while we're, you know, we're going to get maybe more or less rain, but it's going to be much more concentrated. So, it's going to be much more flash-floody. And somebody wants to build something close to a wetland resource area that already is like marginal flood issue. It's like, we don't want you to build there because it's just going to get flooded more and more often. And we, that's what everything is telling us.
Right.
So, maybe that's overreach and we don't want to go there. But that's where I was thinking.
Right, I mean, there might be some other town, there may be some other towns that have included something like this in their bylaw.
Yeah, and Mary, I think this is where we take your point. You know, the discussion you and Ben are having is something that gets sorted out in the regs, right? Like, this is, you know, the great example, we put in the purpose. And what we mean by that, you know, we're trying to flesh out the details of whether we would do. And what we mean by that, you know, we're trying to flesh out the details of whether we would do, like, what Ben was saying. You know, would we talk more about flood risks and flood zones and flood calc, or would we talk more about you know, individual homeowners taking responsibility for climate change? Like, you know, what do you mean there? All right, let's flesh that out. You know, we'll build out a section to address it.
Right, and you could even in the in 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 regulations, you could even have it apply only to projects of a certain size.
Right, right. Yeah, we can really, you know, make good on it, so to speak.
Right. I mean, if you've got a a large project over a certain threshold, then here's, you know, we'd expect you to make to, you know, show us how you're gonna address um how how your project is consistent with, you know, or includes some provisions to address climate change.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, my my point of, you know, bringing this up and getting this kind of idea included or the carbon sequestration idea included is that, you know, this stuff is only getting more prevalent. And if we're in here now doing this, we might as well sort of set ourselves up for when something happens in the future, you know, we've got a basis, you know, baked into this cake already and we don't have to crack it open and start it from scratch.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, I agree.
Or am I adding some more to number 10 or leaving it?
Um, I think number 10, the only question would be the carbon sequestration idea. Do you think it's baked into the number 10 as it stands? Or do you think carbon sequestration and the value of like carbon, like wetlands as carbon sinks? Um, is that appropriate, you know, for this space? And or is it redundant to number 10?
I don't think it's redundant and I and I like leaving it just as a, as a, this is where we're gonna go with the regs. We're gonna do, deal with this one way or another, and then that's where you describe and you're in a in a preamble basically to the, to the um performance standards or whatever you're gonna set for for, you know, to address this issue. You're gonna describe, you know, what what are the kind of things that we're looking for and why. I don't think we need to, that's just my thought. We don't necessarily need to go into a lot of detail unless it's unclear to anybody reading it like before we get any regulations in place, what are, is this gonna be, is this gonna raise a lot of concerns because it's overly broad?
Okay, so then, um, that being said, Bill, why don't you kill that big red paragraph? And then let's go down to the carbon sequestration thing and uh, yeah, number thirteen. Um, all right, let's re. Second thirteen.
What's that? Second thirteen? This one?
Yeah.
We'll fix that.
And then there's a little bit in red there. So so then, you know, the thing is that really wetlands are great carbon sinks and that's the hook that in my mind is worth, you know, hanging the hat on, right? And so the language maybe ought to say something to the effect of uh to promote uh what, to promote uh uh recogn- no, um to encourage, no, because uh, what's the word here? To promote the value of wetlands as carbon sinks. I don't know.
Mm hmm. I think that's part of what we want to want to get at with the with the previous.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think that's a good final.
They're linked together. Yeah, they're linked together and that in the carbon sequestration issue is is something that we would address in regulations unless we wanted to add to number 10, to protect inland wetland areas from the impact of changing climate. You know, such as promoting carbon sequestration.
Oh, I think I got it. If we go back, if we kill carbon sequestration as a separate standout and we add it into the end of number 10, the inland wetland resource areas, the impacts of a changing climate and preserve the ability of wetlands to function as carbon sinks. So then it's a protect and preserve statement.
That one's to that now?
Uh, preserve the function of wetlands.
The ability of what? The ability of wetlands to function as carbon sinks? Or something like that, the capability?
Yeah, exactly. We're just word smithing, but you're both, yeah, you got it.
Yeah.
Function as carbon. Was the last word?
And preserve the ability of wetlands to function as carbon sinks. So kill that first function, yeah. Sure, the ability of what is carbon sinks.
What's the word? Sinks?
S I N K S.
Okay, that's okay.
And then that covers the sequestration thing and we can kill the special standout.
So kill this one, right?
Yep.
Yeah. And then that kills the red language.
We need to worry about just a little.
So, yeah, circling back to agriculture. Oh, you can, yeah.
Yeah, you can kill that red at the.
All this?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, so agriculture is is not, um, or I guess it, I think it's it's addressed in the wetlands regs, but it's not a um identified as a, one of the primary functions of wetlands, but it is identified as a a public interest. And so we, right now, there are agricultural exemptions in the Wetland Protection Act. We don't, without address, without putting something in the bylaw, we won't be able to have an exemption under the regulations, I don't think. So that just is a placeholder, really, number 13, to protect agriculture is a placeholder if we think that we want to apply some agricultural exemptions un- under the bylaw. Like, as currently exist under the state law. Does that make sense?
Or I'm I'm a little confused. Sorry. Does this just enable the state law exemptions? Is that what you're saying? Or do, or if we want to have?
That's what I'm saying. Well, we could, we could accept all of the state law exemptions in our bylaw or or in our um regulations. Or we could um or we could not. I mean, it depends on how everybody feels about agriculture and how they affect wetlands. Um. Right now, the state rule is essentially that anything that's in agricultural use or has been in agricultural use over the last five years, and that's agricultural use means you have, it has to be selling a commodity, an agricultural commodity, then it um the actual maintenance of that agricultural use is exempt. It doesn't allow you to expand agricultural use into new areas. But it does allow you to do things that might not otherwise be allowed in the regulations, like build access roads. Um. You've heard of access for farm equipment and things like drainage and things like this that you wouldn't normally be allowed to do. So it's just, it's, it's, you know, I know, like, for example, tender crop is farming a lot of wetlands. And you know, that's been going on for many, many years and I don't know if there has been any research into that or concern about that, but that is, you know, one of, they're one of the major land users of wetlands in town.
Yeah, Mary, I don't, I don't have, I don't want to take it out necessarily, but I'm just wondering about the word protect. You know, because does that, is that at cross purposes with the rest of the?
No, we can put it in a separate section under either under exemptions or we can just back reference the Wetland Protection Act in another section. So we don't have.
Yeah, well, then let's just leave it and move on because, you know, it's better to have.
We can take it out here. I think that you're, you know, you may be right that it might be awkward right here because it looks like we're trying to promote agriculture and that's not necessarily. I think thirteen and fourteen maybe could both be taken out.
You want me to take?
I mean, we could, we could shift it around to something like to um you know, to encourage the continuation of uh responsible uh land use. Or something, you know, broad and vague like that, because, you know, protecting agriculture arguably is protecting bad agriculture. You know, and, you know, you want good agriculture. I mean, I know that's a stupidly broad kind of a way to put it, but you know, you you don't want to, you want to separate the baby from the bathwater at some point.
Remote responsible agricultural practices in resource areas? I don't know.
Well, and I mean, I just threw land use in, you know, to sort of cover our basis because responsible hunting is, you know, arguably something you want to be able to protect. A responsible um shellfish farming, you know, I don't know, responsible um stone wall building, who knows?
Right, the, yeah, these are just overall purposes of the bylaw itself, and I think that those aren't necessarily purposes of the bylaw. They're just um you know, how we're gonna handle individual project types.
Right.
You know, yeah, I mean, I know it's just coming from the other towns that we took stuff from. So it's, it's hard knowing exactly what they meant there.
Yeah, I think, you know, it was, there was a push in Ipswich, I think particularly, to have something in about agriculture because they have a fair amount of agricultural land. And there was concern about protecting that and not having the, their bylaw make it more difficult for farmers to do what they needed to do because they didn't specifically have an exemption. Um, so I I think that there's a, you know, maybe we put a little asterisk on these two items and come back to them because I think there might be another place to address this further down.
Okay, I think that's a good idea, Mary.
Oh, I know. Should number 11 be first in this list?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Be, yeah, all right, I'll move it up. And is it, should it say all per, all the purposes of, of the purposes? Should say all purposes of?
All the purposes of the, of the, yep.
Like that?
Yeah.
All right, I'll move that up.
Also, Bill, while you're doing that, number 12, species needs an S.
Yeah.
But. So I like those. We'll leave them in for now and maybe we locate them.
Yeah, we may move them later.
Back to those.
Fifteen, one inland.
Yep.
Oh, yeah, inland, yep.
Great.
Nice catch, Dan. And um, number 10, do we want that to have a coastal uh twin? Or do we want to sort of explicitly leave that out of the coastal segment?
Well, we we have it under number eight for coastal. So coastal resiliency and sea level rise are related to climate change, so if we can cha- we can change the language there, but I think that was the intention.
Okay, good. I just want to make sure that um, you know, we don't just, you know, in a manner of speaking, within this, the purposes, you know, I don't want to read like we're giving up but until we get to uh, you know, uh, the edge of the marsh, then we'll, then we'll start trying.
I got a question. Well, it's specifically rare species habitat. Is, do we want to think more broadly about habitat?
That could, that supports rare species? Is that what you're saying, Dan?
Well, you know, wetland resources, one of the interests there is uh habitat. It's just, I wonder if, you know, we're gonna leave it open to some other interpretation of not just rare species.
We have fifteen that includes ecological function. Does that capture?
I I don't know. I'm just, just looking at it. It's very specific. I I just want to make sure that we want it to be that specific. You know, we we've got procedures to deal with the rare species habitat. We don't really have any uh any.
Yep.
Any setup for this general habitat.
And you're not, there's not an equivalent in the coastal section. You know, we're not providing, making an equivalent um rare species habitat protection in our, in our coastal purposes, right, currently?
Man, just bring it up. I don't have any solution.
I, you know, I personally, I feel like that's adding a lot of responsibility to the commission on the that is currently on the natural heritage program. They have all the data on what rare species are occurring. The applicants already have to go to them if they're within mapped habitat. I think that, speaking with Ben, the reason this came up was just if there were rare species encountered on a site that weren't within mapped habitat and they didn't have to necessarily notify natural heritage because they had no record of it, that we would be able to um provide additional protection for those wetlands that would have rare species on them regardless of the ma- the natural heritage mapping that that might exist or not exist. Is that right, Ben?
Yeah, I think that that's a, and I think, Mary, you and I had been to a few places that we thought this might be used, they we'd done some site walks before your commission membership started where it was like this isn't mapped, but it's probably a rare species habitat.
So similar to vernal pools, if, you know, right now, they're protected only if they are certified unless you know, it can be documented during the course of the hearing that they're actually functioning as vernal pool habitat. So the presumption, if it's not mapped, is that it doesn't exist. So this, you know, we could, we could, it could include a vernal pool purpose, too, but that might be. I don't know. That we could include something to protect rare species habitat, including rare plant and animal species regardless of whether or not they are currently mapped as uh by the natural heritage program or something.
Including those not yet mapped by natural heritage?
Yep.
That's good. I I like that idea.
Okay.
Because then it's calling out explicitly, you know, we're not trying to do their job for them, but we are a backstop.
Yeah, okay.
So we're gonna add something to twelve?
Right, right before the semicolon, including those not yet mapped by NHESP.
And then you could do a similar, you know, to protect vernal pools, including those not yet certified by NHESP.
Yeah, yeah, that's good.
Have to capitalize that or not?
Vernal pool habitat, yep.
Fix that afterward. Oops, not mathed.
Cool.
You just have to switch the semicolon there. Bill, after animal species, change the semicolon to a comma.
And number 12, yeah.
The number 12.
Oh, sorry, yeah, yeah.
Okay, guys, let's save the grammar for some other time. Let's get through the meat and potatoes here.
We're in trouble if Brian's getting us curting cats. Good job, man.
Yeah, I know. You are definitely in trouble if I'm calling you out on this kind of thing. Bill can send it to you specifically tomorrow for you to, you know, judge his use of semicolons. Bill can send it to you specifically tomorrow for you to, you know, judge his use of semicolons.
We'll have to edit it a little bit, but we'll fix it.
Yeah, leave it, we're not, we're not doing the
Can this red come out now, or should it stay?
Yeah, kill it. Beautiful.
Beautiful. So this is where these are, this is what we're really gonna have to focus on is, how much do you wanna expand jurisdiction under this bylaw? Um, obviously, there's a need, you know, to provide protection for these areas, vernal pools, um, isolated wetlands, so but anything we do to expand jurisdiction is, you know, has, is a potential for some pushback, so this is
Right.
we just wanna make sure this is the direction we wanna go.
What can we, I, I thought that we didn't necessarily need to expand our jurisdiction if we had special purposes to protect things.
Well, okay, so vernal pools, if they don't occur in a wetland that's already jurisdictional, then they're, you know, we don't have jurisdiction over it.
Gotcha.
And vernal pools, that's the thing, you know, we wanna set some parameters on it in, in regulations, because you could conceivably have a vernal pool in 10 square feet, I mean, they wood frogs lay their eggs in spare tires and things, and, you know, we'd have to put some parameters on it, um, but there's, you know, there's these gaps, there's some gaps in the Wetland Protection Act, and this is intended to try to plug some of them and, and get protection for some of these areas that aren't necessarily protected, so isolated vegetated wetlands, in my opinion, they should be protected only if they meet certain size thresholds and, you know, I think that they should be a decent size, you know, 2,500, 5,000 square feet, that's a lot of towns have 5,000 square foot thresholds, some of them are smaller, 500 square feet, and that is problematic to put a 500 square foot well in with a 100 foot buffer zone all around it. It's a, you know, that's a lot, that's maybe unnecessary. So.
So if we include, actually, vegetated wetlands, do we wanna set a buffer zone? Call, clearly call that out here, or do we wanna do it in regulation?
I think we do, we do it in regulation, but we, we, well, we can do it here, both, because at some point, you're gonna say, I think down below, what the buffer zone are to these areas, I think there's a buffer zone section, isn't there? Yeah, land within 100 feet of the above, of the above resources, so maybe some of them have buffer zones, some of them don't. Some of the buffer zones are different than others, we, we could do that as part of the bylaw. I don't think we make A C E C its own resource area, I just think that makes it difficult for us, I think all the A C E C is in, in, up till elevation 10 is already in a resource area, because it's all gonna be at least land subject to coastal storm flowage, so I don't think we need to make it a separate resource area, that's my opinion.
I mean, I just want us to be able to, it has a ton of protections anyways, I just want us, if by, we included it as a special purpose, so does that justify our doc, making our doc policy into a regulation?
Sure.
Okay, so that's all
I think that, I think it does, if we expand upon that as, you know, a purpose under the regulations.
So we don't, yeah, I'm all for, I'm, agree with you, Mary, if we don't need it, then we shouldn't make, make it a jurisdictional area.
Yeah.
Take it out, take it out.
Yeah, kill it.
What do you think, Dan?
Um, it doesn't seem, I, I don't, I don't think I really understand what's going on, but I, I kinda wish it was called out. Um, because are we gonna have any, are there gonna be regulations associated with A C E C, or are we just gonna let salt marsh and other things be the regulatory?
That's, that's what we're proposing, I mean, we, we can, because protection of the A C E C is a purpose that we've established further up on this in the bylaw, we can write regulations regarding it, where it occurs in other resources. So if we're writing, if we're writing performance standards for salt marsh, and it's within an A C E C, we can say, you know, we need additional protection in these areas, potentially additional buffer or building setbacks or, or something, so I think having it as a purpose allows us to do that, we don't necessarily have to create a new resource area for it, that means we have to define how it's how it's identified, if it's different than how, what currently is being used, and I don't know, I think it's, it's just unnecessary, in my opinion.
I mean, sort of my general thinking is that it does no harm to, uh, claim jurisdiction, and you might have no performance standards, so
We could.
But, but at least it's a, you know, it's a jurisdictional area, even if you don't do anything about it, or you don't have any relations yet, there's some benefit to this.
Yep, what, what I'm saying is that it, all of the A C E C that we have overlaps with another resource already, so in the performance standard for that underlying resource that we already have protection over, we could add language that says if this resource also is within A C E C, then X, Y, and Z shall occur.
Essentially, you're saying, Mary, that because the great marsh, A C E C of the habitat types, we already through the Wetland Protection Act, have jurisdiction over everything.
Yep.
And, and the only thing, so we are, we already have jurisdiction over the whole thing, and by adding it as a special purpose, we're saying that we can include additional regulations, because it's not only something we have jurisdiction over, but we have special interest in it, because it is a special separate A C E C. And so we don't need to double down on our jurisdiction.
Yeah, I don't think so.
Does that make sense, Dan? Does that clarify it?
Yeah, that's fine. Um, I'm still, I think we might wanna talk on one and two there, but I don't, I don't know.
But, but, like Gloucester has a A C E C as a, as a resource area, and they have 150 foot buffer zone to it. So it goes pretty far inland, and it encompasses a lot of just permanent infrastructure and, you know, roads and things like that. And it, so it just really expands your workload.
Yeah, and I'm just looking at the map of the A C E C, and it really, you know, it looks like they cut off, you know, the high tidelines, so there's not even the upland of any sort that we would have to deal with, you know, it, it really is just, you know, already covered by one resource area or another.
It goes to elevation 10, which at the time that the A C E C was, um, established, the great marsh A C E C, that was like close to 100 year flood elevation, which is now not the case, but that's why it was, it was, it was done by elevation.
So the, there are parts of town, so this is one, I'll play devil's advocate to what I just said. And I might just be making a total nonsensical point, but, um, there are places in
We love those.
Yeah, thanks, bud, um, where there are houses very, very close to the A C E C. Like, we've had more than, we've had quite a number of hearings, where, like, it's been houses, right, that have been affected by this whole thing, where the salt water intrusion into water tanks and stuff like that, and having to deal with all sorts of things, is there an advantage in cases like that, in places like that, where making it a jurisdictional area would help? As opposed to just a special purpose?
Um, you know, possibly, I, it's hard to say, I mean, I'm thinking of a case I have right now in Ipswich, where A C E C comes all the way, includes most of the yard, and they have to do a septic repair, and they can't get it out of the A C E C, and, you know, it, it functionally, it exists, and, but there's nothing you can do about it, so there's I'm not sure what more they would add if this was a, if it was an actual resource area, it wouldn't make probably any difference in how the project was handled.
Okay, yeah, if it doesn't make a difference, then I, I, maybe
I don't know.
For me, there's a level of um, calculus as far as just not wanting to add a ton of jurisdictions. But maybe we're overthinking that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we're overthinking this one, I think let's kill the A C E C, and if we wanna talk about, um, you know, houses that are really close to that, you know, the, the new and future high tideline, you know, we can address those differently, but, you know, the A C E C, you know, is, um, yeah, it would just be repetitive.
Yeah, not, adding, I mean, to Ben's point, just to add one more thing, it does provide you with the ability to add a buffer zone to it, so if you made it a, a separate resource area, you could have a buffer zone to it as well. So if that's something that the commission wants to do.
I noticed other towns that, for instance, A C E C, there's no septic systems allowed with 100, within 100 feet. On new construction.
Right.
Do we anticipate anything like that in the, you know, in the regs?
You know, that's, that's a good point, um, and if it wasn't in another buffer zone, I think for, for the maximum amount of protection, yeah, you could make it a separate resource area, I, I guess I can go either way on this, um, but I think you may be getting onto something that if we really wanna be able to establish specific performance standards for work in an A C E C, we'd have to make it a resource.
I mean, if there's no appetite to, you know, regulate, you know, have more specific regulation and performance standards, then there's no point having it in there, but if there is, and I think it's
Let, let's keep it in and see what kind of public input we get.
Yeah, I agree with Mary, and Dan, that's a good point.
All right, so then, vernal pool and isolated wetlands. I think vernal pool oughta go in, and isolated wetlands, uh, I think we should do something, I don't know, you know, whether Mary's 500, 2,500, 5,000 examples, you know, I don't know which one I prefer, uh, but I feel like, you know, you know, like Mary just said about the A C E C, let's see what happens, you know, let's, let's bring it up for discussion and see if anybody, you know, cares to make a point out of it, and, you know, I, I mean, I, I think that isolated vegetated wetlands, you know, you can have some really big ones, you know, and if they're unprotected, then that's a shame.
Right, so, so if you think about the state regulations are 10,000, you know, the isolated land subject to flooding, which is a little bit different, but it does have a size criteria of 10,000 cubic feet. To, to, a quarter acre, one foot deep, no buffer zone. So this would, you know, I would, I would think we'd at least at a minimum wanna capture the 10,000 square foot wetlands, but how, how small you wanna go is the question.
I think, one, one thought I had was, um, in the regulations, you could be, you know, if it's this size, and it has, uh, the same value as non-isolated, then I mean, you, you can kinda graduate the effect, I think we've seen recently an isolated wetland that could I mean, we, we talked our way into, uh, some sort of erosion control, but if we, we really didn't have jurisdiction to do that. Important to kinda keep that ability and, um, somehow figure out the regulations after, you know, could be nothing, you know?
Right, I mean, the risk is somebody wants to just fill it in, and we wouldn't have any jurisdiction over it at all.
Right. I mean, that's a good regulation in and of itself, just no filling of isolated vegetative wetlands that has typical wetland function.
So should we put a size on it, or leave it? Open for now.
I think we should have put a placeholder size on it at least, and, you know, again, for public input, I, it's my thought, but
Do you wanna go small or large? Or in the middle? I hope that's like 500 is probably too small, 2,500, maybe 5,000, in that range.
I mean, it's sort of connected with a vernal pool as well, because those are isolated vegetative wetlands, if
It can be, it can be, or it can be in an, in an, in a B B W.
Right, but the ones that, I think the things that are slipping through the cracks are, yeah, it could be a very small, isolated vegetated wet
I would, I would go with 2,500 feet, I think that that's a good number to float.
Yep, and then, you know, then you, the way we can have this set up, um, Dan, is that any, any isolated wetland, say, we use the 2,500 square feet, is protected, any wetland that has vernal pool habitat, regardless of its size, would be protected.
Minimum, or in square foot minimum? Or greater, I don't understand, like greater?
And greater, or greater, yeah.
In size? Yeah, in area or something.
Do that math symbol, greater than or equal to?
Don't make him put a
There's a keyboard shortcut for that one, though.
Oh, greater, yeah.
Um, yeah.
That, we'll take care of that in the, uh, in the definitions as well, I would guess.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
You want the vernal pool habitat within or without, or within or outside of wetlands? Or to be, does it even matter, that we have to even specify?
Whether or not it occurs in otherwise jurisdictional wetland, and whether or not it's been certified by natural heritage.
So, it's good language.
Regardless of, include, of
Regardless of size or something like that?
Regardless of size or certification, status?
Nice, that's good.
Okay.
But now is that special purpose about vernal pools redundant? Do we, I know we didn't have a vernal pool one, right?
We added one, I think.
Yeah, we did have one.
Yeah, we added it to
Yeah, 13 there.
Yeah, 13, 13. The first 13.
Yeah, the actual 13, 13 is 14, 14, 13.
Make it go.
Anyway, you, let's fix that later, let's keep going. Uh, so that looks like we can kill this red lettering, had we, we dealt with all those?
Not buffers, that's all the red lettering.
Right, I don't know if we wanna make buffers a resource area, I'm
No, I, I feel like the buffer being a resource now is a bridge too far.
Yeah, you probably get a lot of feedback on that.
Yeah.
It just makes everything that you receive as a notice of intent, I mean, no one files anything other than something in a resource area, and it kind of defeats the purpose of establishing the importance of resource areas.
So we'll take this out?
Yes, yeah.
We can, we can put limitations on it in the regulations, though.
Yeah, we can still include no cut areas and stuff like that in the regulations without it, so.
So did you wanna leave that number four? I mean, that basically saying
Within these three areas?
Uh, yeah, Dan, you're right, if we leave that as number four, then we're calling the 100 foot buffer a resource area.
Oh, no, you have jurisdiction within 100 feet of these three items, but you might not wanna be 100 feet, you might wanna be some other number for the isolated.
No, it looks like it's a resource area, and the way it's worded right now, so Yeah, it looks like it's a resource area and the way it's worded right now. So I think we want to take that out, number four.
Take it out.
Yeah, cut and paste that language, uh, above to the line proceeding. So it says, as well as within 100 feet of the following additional resource areas.
As well as within?
As well as within 100 feet of the following additional resource areas. So right where your cursor is, yeah. Yeah, stop. Here you go. Yeah, perfect. And then kill number four. Does that do the trick?
As well as land within 100 feet of the following additional resource areas? Is that obvious?
It's a coin toss around. Mary, when it comes to the concom and these laws, I don't know if anything's ever obvious.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I think Bill Holt, um, you might want to highlight that section, that land within 100 feet that we just wrote in. That's something that Lisa should probably, uh, have a strong opinion on. Cause that's where we're calling out the buffer area. But I can see the legalese, you know, being wrong here.
Yes, it also goes to Mary's point. Do we want to regulate 100 feet around an isolated vegetated wetland? Or?
No, but the, you know, the removal, filling, dredging, all that other stuff, you know, you can't do that within 100 feet. That makes sense. You know, it's, we're creating a buffer to these spaces.
Okay, alright.
So, you know, but if that's legally a buffer or if, you know, still the, the, the way the language is written, Florida should look at it different.
You have to file with the conservation agency if you're within 100 feet of these. And then the regulations can say, isolated vegetated wetlands, X amount of feet or whatever. Okay, makes sense.
Yeah. Let's go to the next thing. I mean, we, we good on this one, guys? Okay, yeah, let's go find the next problem to solve.
I don't do too many left. Few maybe. Definitions maybe. Now I gotta change that to more current. That's all I'm highlighting that for. It's the more current version of the maps.
So hold on, Bill, go back to that for a second. Um, flood zone boundaries delineated on.
It's the FEMA maps, but the, throughout, that reference is outdated. I'm going to update the reference to the current. I'm just going to make a note.
Can we simply say, can we say, specify the most core current and then say, or more current?
Yeah, as revised.
Yeah, or more, most recent as revised or as amended, yep.
Um, well, and, and Ben and Mary, this is a question for you two especially. Um, do we want to talk about like the most recent, you know, high watermark as any kind of regulatory jurisdictional um, item?
We don't have to because it built in, isn't it? Um, essentially it's built in mean eye water. I mean, mean eye water can be changing, so you have to mark it individually on in every, on every location.
Well, right, I, I'm sort of thinking like every new Northeaster arguably could move the, the latest high watermark up. You know, until the FEMA won't keep up with the storm that just happened.
Oh, well, the FEMA maps are based, they're backwards looking. So they're based on data that's already occurred and they're, um, you know, just the statistical, you know, 1% probability of, event. So it's, it doesn't take into account any change at all in.
Right. And, you know, considering the circumstances of the towns we're in, you know, between the marsh and Plum Island and, you know, the stuff that goes in, so route one. You know, do you guys feel?
I think that's a big push. I think that, I think that's saying that, because it's not anywhere in here right now, you know, or right now we're regulating based on flood zone maps and FEMA maps and all this stuff. And if we're going to step outside and just talk about high watermarks and episodic events.
That is actually in the, the state regulations right now. Is it land subject to coastal storm flowage is typically determined by the FEMA map. But it says in the language in it, it actually says, or, you know, mu- um, maximum extent of flooding observed or recorded. So if you had a photograph, dated photograph that showed watermarks on a building, you know, on a pier or something that was at certain elevation, you could use that um, as the land subject to coastal storm flowage boundary.
So we don't need to, because it's already there.
It's just, it's just that it's unrealistic and impractical for most people to know what that is at the time that they file. If they didn't happen to be there to observe it when it happened.
Right. And more importantly though, would it be useful and helpful for the purposes of the commission's work? Or would that just be, you know, paperwork and running around and to more bother than it's worth?
Yeah, I think it would be, it'd just be way, way too hard for us to verify.
Great. Then moving on, I'll, I'll stop talking. Thank you.
I just want to point something that sort of been bugging me for a while is this A O zone. I mean, there's no A O zone. There's no reason not to have it in there. New reports got a bunch of A O zone. Um, but it always seemed odd. There was no real mention of A E. You know, it's, that's a special flood hazard areas as well. I don't know if there's any interest in, you know, regulating that area.
That, that could be because this is what came out of the, well.
What's an A H zone? I don't even know what that is.
It's supposed to be A E?
I don't know.
It's coastal storm flowage.
Maybe we want to change that to.
Uh, it talks about coastal, but it may be in, right? I'll double check that.
If that's a, an A H zone is the land subject to coastal.
Maybe we should have an A E zone in here too as a number four.
Yeah.
3A or something.
Yep.
I mean, that, I take this to mean the A E or even, it's actually an A which has no elevation, but it's also a flood zone.
Yeah.
A little more difficult to pin down, but it's possible.
They call all of the 100 year flood elevations though, something they call them what maximum flood hazard or something like that, areas of maximum flood hazard or, they, there's a term for them.
Yeah, I think I think by referencing this, you're basically referencing all of them essentially.
Right.
Whether they're on a coastal or inland.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's sort of, you know, like V zone is, you know, lim- there's no new, basically, I think it's no new building. A, you know, I, there, there's, I think it'd be easier if we just left out coastal stuff the way it is. There's some stuff that's grouped up in there too. There's another place that I'll, we'll come to that I'll mention when we get there. I don't know if you guys have seen as well, it, it kind of bugged me right in the center. We had a, we had an application and it was, they had V zone on the lot, it had A E 13 on the lot. miraculously somehow between the two, there was an X zone. I mean, it made absolutely no sense and it ended up working out okay because I did sort of agree to, uh, you know, kind of say, well, it's anything below 13 is in the flood. We're going to, it was all up on pilot, but, um, just kind of.
Yeah.
Kind of screwed, you know, they're nuts. Sometimes they make no sense whatsoever.
I think on the island, the A E zone doesn't require compensation for whether, I mean, obviously you want to be above the elevation with your first floor. But I don't think it matters in terms of filling in the A E zone where the ocean is the body of water that's being flooded essentially.
I mean.
Drop, drop in a, drop, eyedropper in a, you know, pool. It's not going to matter much.
I mean, I don't see making changes here, but I'm just pointing, I'll point it, continue to point out some kind of.
Yeah.
Because these are, these are all, these are all coastal flood zones. So I think we got to include the A E, the A zone, which is the inland designation for flood zones. Check, yeah, I can add those in here.
I think, yeah, because if you go up, what section are we talking about right now? What are we just on? What are we on here?
No, this is part of the original one, development, redevelopment.
Yeah, but it's, what's, what's A definitions? We're just definitions. Okay. Yep.
But I think we should definitely include the A E and the A zones that are in
That makes sense.
Definitions of those two, I can add those in here.
Yes.
Somewhere we'll number them in here.
Mm hmm. That's a good point.
I have the three, we add four and five for those two zones.
Okay.
Add those.
Okay.
So these definitions, I think, are what we kind of went up above, but that's the red area. I think needs to be addressed. This one always says certified vernal pools.
Right.
Up above, we said, even if it's not certified, so.
Yep. So maybe we should change that. Any vernal pool, whether or not certified by.
Yeah, and I think, Bill, at some point, wh- when this is over, um, maybe go back and double check and just copy paste your language so that whatever you're saying like here aligns with the, the version that you wrote above.
You're just going to want to reword that because it's.
Yeah, it doesn't make any sense. I think it should say, Bill, the vernal pool habitat should mean any vernal pool, whether or not certified.
Yeah, I mean, just.
And then, and then, yeah. And then at the end of that sentence, say, you know, something like provided it otherwise meets the certification criteria of um, in 310 C M R 1057.
Otherwise meets the criteria?
Certification criteria.
And now cut in accordance with C three gen and put it down to the bottom.
Yeah, I don't think that's, I, I don't think the certification criteria is in 310 C M R 1057. I think it's just certification criteria of the natural heritage program. And then yeah, uh, we can, yeah, that'll be a good placeholder. The other thing is, um, some towns have an additional statement here that says, you know, for, uh, uh, you know, a isolated wetland shall be presumed got contained vernal pool habitat unless it's demonstrated otherwise, or say, because these can only be determined seasonally. There, it, it's somebody applies in the fall for work in an isolated wetland and says, oh, well, it's not providing vernal pool habitat. Well, that's not the right time of year to make the determination. So we would have to make a decision as to whether or not we have to presume that it's a vernal pool or provide, have them delay their project until it can be determined outright. Like I, I would say isolated wells may be because it, it could be obvious on some isolated wetlands, there's no way that's going to flood enough to provide vernal, uh, vernal pool habitat. So I think we need to provide people with a little bit of wiggle room in certain isolated wetlands that are maybe just a depression that have that, that has some hydroic soil and some seasonal ponding, but doesn't have any of the other potential functions. I can envision a wetland that would meet the isolated vegetated wetland criteria, but still not support for a pool.
I like that, Mary.
Yeah, that was good.
Otherwise determined by the applicant. We don't want to have the burden of proving, we want them, I, so I read this down either. We want to make sure they, the applicant has to prove that it's not.
Yeah.
By the applicant.
No, that's by the commission. Uh, oh, well, I, I'm not sure.
Yeah, no, we don't.
Maybe we want to say the commission may presume versus isolated vernal pools are. I gotta think about this one. My brain is starting to get fried here.
I just, I didn't want to put the burden on the commission to prove that it's not.
Oh, yeah, isolated may be presumed to contain real pool habitat unless otherwise determined by the applicant. Okay, I think you had it right at first. Yeah, because they can, uh, unless otherwise demonstrated as, as otherwise by the applicant or something.
Yeah. Because demonstrated implies that they've shown us and we've agreed.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah, we don't want them to determine it. Otherwise demonstrated. That it is not.
By the, by the applicant. Yep, you're right.
To the satisfaction of the commission?
Yep.
No, I mean, because demonstration implies all of these other things. You know, they have to demonstrate to somebody. Demonstration means they've shown and they can demonstrate to us. I mean, you know, for all intents and purposes, they could demonstrate to N H E S P and that would, you know, be fine too. You know, as long as they're not demonstrating to the highway department, but obviously we wouldn't let that fly. So you know, I think we're safe there. I think that's good language.
Should I take this out now?
Yep. Yeah, we, I think we covered that one too. That's good. Yep.
Yeah.
Isolated vegetated wetland.
We, we use 2,500 square feet above, so.
Yeah.
Oh, wait, I went, I'm not putting it in the way.
Yep.
No, this is not exceeding 5,000. Doesn't make any sense.
Shall, but it's not exceeding, shall not be subject to protection.
Uh, wait, okay. Okay, not seeing 2,500, what were you using?
Yep.
Oops, I used to. I'm putting right spot.
Nope.
Yeah, what the heck? I want it staying there.
It's not letting you edit.
Never mind. I got it. It's my number lock was not on.
Okay.
So it was bouncing out. There we go.
And then you can take out from Ipswich too.
Yeah. So we all set that. So we all set that potentially. This can, this all can be in the regulations, right? How much disturbed and all that, what disturbance zone you want.
Yeah. I mean, just reading that, it looks scalable to me.
Yeah. Something we can put in the regulations. Now we have the great marsh. Definition of that.
I mean, I don't think it hurts to have the great marsh definition, you know, even if we're not regulating according to it, or even if that piece falls out. You know, I don't think it does any harm to leave it.
I think we don't, um, in the definition, we, we're only calling it area of critical environmental concern. We're not calling it great marsh area of critical environmental concern. So maybe we just want to take out great marsh right there. And then, and then in the event that we get any more A C C's in town, then it would be covered.
Or in the event that, you know, Newberry gets larger and, you know, eats Ipswich.
Yeah.
Um. Maybe the other way around, so. Exactly. See, then we're covered from all angles.
Mary expressed some meanings about inclusion. I think we already resolved that one.
Yep. The whole thing, yeah, all done. I like this deleting. This is fun.
Okay, and these are all, this is all existing.
This, this, I don't know what this is supposed to say.
That's where I just know.
What's that?
That, that should be fixed while we're at it.
Do we know what it's supposed to say?
Hold on, Dan and Bill, hold on. That one is a typo from the, the law we have on the books at the moment. And so, in, you know, if we want to adjust that typo, I think we, you know, that would be changing the, the mandated law. And so that, like, I don't know.
We've already changed it in other places, so like we'll be changing it in the FEMA definition and, you know, so.
Yeah.
I think it's okay to make changes.
As long as nobody's gonna make a fuck.
I just don't know what it's supposed to say, Ian, why?
We just need to find the language.
My guess is it, that following sentence, I'm like, just think, some substantial improvements. I think it was just an extension of that. For some reason, they separated it out. My guess.
So it just and needs to come out?
Um. Oh, this is supposed to be and substantial in life as.
Yeah, that was probably what went on.
Oh, substantial improvements. Yeah, okay.
I'll check it and see if I can find out. I'm gonna do that, but I'll figure it out.
I think you could almost get rid of the and in the footnote and it would read right, wouldn't it?
Yeah, I'm just leaving it in there right now, just to make sure we to find out if that's really what it is supposed to be. Is it buildings, all new buildings and substantial improvement, so comply with? Oh, also some. It just says the same thing below here, so I don't, I don't get it. Doesn't it? It says the same thing twice.
Yeah, so that's why I say you can.
Oh, so we can get it.
Fix is get rid of the and in the.
Ah, you get rid of the buildings and basically, I don't know. Oh, existing buildings. Oh, wait, all existing buildings and all new buildings, different. One says all new buildings and one says all existing buildings.
Right, I think they tried to fold that all into one sentence and then had second. It has horizontal expansions.
So you think maybe the and should come out? It should be nothing after.
That's what it looks like.
All right, so let me take that back out and maybe we just take the and out, cause that looks like it, it shouldn't say, it's a new building, it's not a substantial improvement. The building isn't substantial improvement, so. All right, so maybe the and should come out. I can find out and verify that before we actually take it out.
Might, um, you might actually, so just leave it and let her repair it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep. I know myself. That looks like what it should be. It should, and should just be out of it, you know, to make sense, I guess. All right. Think we're coming down to the end.
Yeah, go back up to the V, the FEMA definitions within FEMA V, A and A O zone. Okay. Never mind, okay.
There's no A H zone there, Mary.
Variances, we need to change, I don't think.
Yeah, there was no A H zone. I don't know why.
Okay.
Well, maybe it doesn't exist, maybe the A H was a typo.
Yeah, I might find that out. We'll, we'll see. I'll check on that. Right, variances, we having to change on these, look like it.
So has all that section that's both.
That's all existing in the bylaw now.
So been integrated.
Yep, that's all that's already there. Yep.
So I realized tonight that there's, and I apologize, um, we can just leave it alone if you guys want, but there's something I think I brought up early on in this process that I then forgot about till right now. Which is that the, if I, if I'm just dead wrong about this, please somebody say something, but I believe that the riverfront area regulations are part of the zoning commission regulations and not the conservation commission regulations.
Wait, what?
The three hundred foot setback on the riverfront area.
Two hundred.
Two hundred, sorry. Thank you, Mary.
It's just a two hundred foot riverfront area. It's not really a setback, but yeah, that's part of the Wetland Protection Act.
No, but there used to be a Parker River three hundred foot setback, I believe is what Ben's talking about.
Is it, did, I thought it was still in existence with there, is it not still in existence?
It, it may be. I, I don't know. I can check.
That was something I could be brought into this.
Right. I, I think it, so there, I think there is one on the Parker River, but it's not under our purview. It's through zoning. And I'm suggesting that perhaps we want to make it part of our regulations so that it doesn't get rolled back by zoning when it really has a lot to do with us.
Right, but zoning is a building setback, right?
Believe so.
We can't, we can't eliminate the zoning, but we may be able to add it to ours as well, but we can't eliminate zoning.
Well, right, but if it's three hundred feet, we would have to add another hundred foot of buffer jurisdiction to get out to.
Yeah.
The setback. That's why this is a suggestion. It's something that's currently the Parker River enjoys in town, but it, um, is through no authority of ours and it could go away. I've heard mentioned that there are people who want it to go away. Um, and so I don't know if it's something that the commission's interested in trying to wrap into our regulations to have a backstop.
I think it's a selectmen purview. It's not even in zoning. It's a sort of a standalone thing that was, it was basically brought in, cause the snuff mill was gonna be developed into condos and they didn't want it to happen.
Oh. All right, let's, let's finish this up and then let's circle back to Ben's point and see if we have the mental energy for it.
Are there any more, um, red areas we need to look at to make decisions on?
Right now, he's gonna go back, we got the variances.
I don't think there is. That's why I didn't want to bring it up till we're done with it.
Do we have exemptions? Are we using the same exemptions as this Wetland Protection Act? I think there's something in there about that in the.
I believe so, Mary.
This is a. You don't want to fill that day in, but.
This shall not apply to those product activities which are exempt from the provisions of the Wetland Protection Act as a mention. Okay. That's good. Unless we want to be specific about our own exemptions, I think just referencing back to the state rules is fine.
Well, I, I, when we write our regulations, can we include regular, uh, exemptions in certain parts of it if, like for existing septic system? Wouldn't, I guess, so we have to comply with some of the setbacks, we're gonna probably eventually.
We can, we can have like limited projects or, or relaxed performance standards for certain projects, but it doesn't mean they're not doesn't mean they're exempt from filing. They'd still have to file.
Right, okay, yeah. Yeah, so I think that's it.
Board of Health.
Apparently. What's that? Are you looking up the, uh?
Yeah, it's a board of health regulation.
Oh, for a setback to septic?
I guess.
Yeah. Hmm. I can talk to Deb about that, but I go, I don't know if it's, if it's still in fact, place. I know, um, Rowley has a similar one for the Mill River. They have a, a setback. I believe it's three hundred feet as well.
What's the town, uh, population right now?
Just shy of seven.
Four thousand nine hundred ninety nine.
No.
Fourteen something. No, it's not even that high.
No, it's always, I think the town is not growing. It's, it's been like just shy of seven thousand a long time. I think it still is.
You're right, Dan. Look at you, seventy, well, seven thousand one hundred and forty four. Um, it is going to grow, but I mean, I think that in two years is gonna be up above seventy five hundred if I look at the number of housing units that are being built and proposed, but, um, I just, I just found a table in this thing I was reading that was like, uh, oh, no, I lost it. Where was it? The, uh, build out, they said that projected build out population was eleven thousand eight hundred and ninety six. You're right. I mean, uh, nineteen ninety nine, the population was six thousand nine hundred and seventy, Dan.
I mean, they, you know, they, they build onto the school and the school's like only sixty percent filled, I think.
Yeah.
Right here, should I take out the great marsh on this, and just say area of critical? Then we took it out down below.
Yeah. You could put a, oh, no, whatever, don't worry. Um, this is where we would put the Parker River thing. We'd need a paragraph underneath the area of critical environmental concern, calling out the three hundred foot bound to the river, right? This is where we would put it.
What, what is that actually? Is it just a prohibition about against, uh, septic systems more within three hundred feet, or is it actually more than that? And I don't know what it's, I can't remember now what it involved. If it was just septic, is it a board of health regulation or is it?
I, I may be wrong about this, cause this is from nineteen ninety nine and they're saying that it's a board of health regulation, but those interviewed think it would be more helpful if it became a overlay protection district under the zoning. So maybe that happened after nineteen ninety nine.
Maybe we should look into it before we put anything else in there.
Yeah, I, or, or we can just leave it alone. I, 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 I think that somebody told me it was under zoning. So it may be under zoning now.
Yeah, Ben, let's, let's file that one away. I think, um, this evening went well. We took care of this. I think let's have Bill, you know, let's have a motion at some point to like accept this and, you know, kick it down the road so Bill can send this off for review and, you know, for everyone else to get a crack at it. And then, you know, if, at the end, uh, we see, you know, cause you made a good point that if somebody else is already doing it, you know, it's no harm to sort of, um, have multiple boards being consistent with each other on things like this. Um, and that would be helpful, uh, but I think we can bring that up later. You know, I think, um, for once we can be done before nine. And we should, we should take advantage of the opportunity.
That would be good for me.
Gonna get it done so I can get it to Lisa, me, and we need to get on, get on the, uh, schedule a public hearing for public comment. Probably end of March, early, early April.
Yeah, Bill, if you can, you know, get that on the calendar, sort of ASAP, so that, you know, we can, if you get it on the calendar as soon as possible, right? That means that then, uh, the publicizing of it, you know, the sharing it around, you know, the sending your friends and inviting your sister and, you know, whatever. You know, we can have the sort of the public part, you know, because that's what we're looking for eventually. It's a public input, you know.
So our next.
And Steve's listening, but you know, it'd be nice to have somebody else here.
Our next, our next meeting is the ninth and then what's it adds to thirtieth? So do you want me to try to put one in between there for a special hearing on just this? I would think it would make sense to have a special hearing on it.
Yeah. I think that'd be good. The sooner the better and then, you know.
Sometime between, sometime between the ninth and thirtieth. Have a special meeting or, and we can announce it.
Yeah. I mean, see what, see what the town calendar looks like and, yeah.
All right.
You know.
So it's, it'll be a Zoom meeting. It should be interesting. Anticipate number of.
Yeah, and we'll just. Yeah, we'll see who shows up and we'll just leave it as an open meeting for people to see this, read it, look at it, ask questions and, you know, um, maybe we'll, uh, we'll limit it to a two hour meeting. And then if there's more questions and more people who didn't get the chance, you know, we'll schedule a follow up. Something like that. I don't know. Um, but in the spirit of, um, having done a good job so far and, you know, not eating up our entire evening. Um, I think we're in a good position. I think this is well done. I think this is good work. And I think that somebody ought to make a motion to sort of, uh, accept this and pass it along to, uh, Lisa.
I'd like to take one more look at it with corrections that is, um, has got there, just clean copy and just take one more final look at it before it goes.
Okay.
Well, so Mary, the only hang up there.
Yeah.
Is it a timing thing?
Yeah, exactly.
Oh, okay. Well, then I can look at it concurrently. I mean, you know, and get you an if.
Yeah, we're still gonna do the public outreach and the public input and.
It's gonna be a draft.
Like, we're not done with it.
Yeah, it's a draft.
All right. Yeah, that's fine.
You know, I'll probably make sure to label it as a draft for now and it won't be a final product, so.
Okay.
Yeah, Mary, this is just the version to send to council and to sort of let them know where we are so that we can, um, find out if we've got any legal problems and, you know, to, to make something that we can put out for public consumption.
Sounds good.
I motioned that we accept the draft as written and pass it on to council.
All right, first and second. Uh, all right, roll call. Benjamin.
Yep.
Bill.
Yes.
Daniel. Mary.
Yes.
And I will also vote yes. And so, awesome. Thank you, everybody. Um, and then, um, Bill, I presume that, um, this'll get, you know, out and turned around in time for the public, uh, thing, right? Like the, the part that, you know, let's just say you schedule, uh, a meeting on the twenty third, we will have Lisa's comments sort of back by then, I'm presuming.
Yeah, so I'll try to get this out by end of the week so that we can get her and I'll send it out to everybody as well, so you can read the final draft that we get have done and hopefully it should, should take two weeks to review it, so I get it out the end of the week.
Yeah, yeah.
Ready, ready for the twenty third.
And you sent her that earlier draft as well, right?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, but she's, she's already, you know, a week into looking at this and the things that you changed. Uh, yeah, so then when you send her this version, just make sure, um, you know, while it's fresh in your mind, you know, if you can highlight the things that did change, you know, whatever details you changed, um, so we save her the time, uh, finding it on her own. That would be helpful, I suspect.
Yeah.
So are we scheduling a public hearing on this for March twenty third? Is that what I heard?
Maybe. It's somewhere between the ninth and the thirtieth. No, wait, is that what you said, Bill?
Yeah, between ninth and the thirtieth, so it'd be the, you're the. Yeah, between ninth and the thirtieth, so it'd be the, either sixteenth or the twenty third, be one of the two dates.
Okay.
What's that?
I don't think I'll be available on the sixteenth.
Okay, so the twenty third would probably be a better, better day then. We'll target the twenty third.
Yeah, and we'll see who even shows up, we might all just sit here and make jokes about my hair.
Mary.
All right, well, then, uh, I think then, you know, who, uh, anybody interested in making a motion to move on with their evening and go to bed early?
Move to adjourn this meeting.
Second it. All right, uh, and we'll do a roll call, uh, Bill, no, not Bill, I'm missing, Ben.
Yes.
Bill.
Yes.
Daniel.
Yes.
Mary.
Yes.
And I will also vote yes. Um, all right, well done, everybody.